Very good. Okay, we're on. Good evening, everyone, those present and those joining us on People Channel 191. We have a full board tonight. Dan LaValle down the far end, Stephen Johnson, Mark Darnold, and Paul Fergal, who was not here at the previous meeting, however, he has submitted a...
Mullins.
Mullins letter that I have... Maybe I can just close out of this a minute and bring that back up to verify what we're doing here.
Paul, could you speak up a little, please?
I'm just gonna... I'm going to verify Paul Fergal's Mullins...
Rule.
Rule verification letter that he has presented to us tonight. Do you see it on the screen that...
Yep.
He has the video on that and has signed off on it, so he's up to speed on what happened at the meeting. I'm in agreement with that. Yes. Thank you, Paul, for getting up to speed. Let me get back to where I was here. All right, so Richard Harris is with us, our board consultant, who reviewed all of these criteria, and also there was three items left over from the last meeting that we need to have addressed, so I'll have Richard take it from here.
At the last meeting, the board wanted three items. One was a map that showed the areas of greater than 15% slope. Another one was the stormwater O&M plan, and a detail for the way the stabilization's going down when water is going over the access drive. And they've submitted those three, and I believe the applicants engineer has the copies to give each member of the board. Can you explain those?
Thank you. Now, is this the right chart you want up first if that's going to be explained?
It doesn't matter anymore. It's a slope figure, I'm sure.
So that shows in green all areas of 15% slope or less, and the orange, it's kind of beige on this, on the slide, is areas of greater than 15% slope. So you'll see the two sections of the array, the upper right, which is bisected by the access road, the lower left, those have been cited to avoid as much as possible 15% slopes. There are a couple of small areas on the edges of those solar arrays where the slope exceeds 15%, but the larger 15% slopes are elsewhere on the site. So we had asked for the waiver because it's possible to put the panels there because the ground surface is undulating. We don't plan to do grading or topsoil removal, so it would simply be a matter of erecting the solar arrays. In some areas within the array, it would overlap on those 15% or greater slopes. But the understanding is the intent of the bylaw is to minimize erosion. We don't believe that those small areas, 15% slope, that would not be graded or topsoil removed would cause any greater erosion potential.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Stephen.
I wasn't here when the bylaw was adapted for solar, but is my understanding that instead of the more common or traditional or archaic sled mounted, you have a different mounting system that will also be more adapted to steeper areas?
Yes, so the panels will be placed on posts.
So they'll be drilled into the ground?
Driven into the ground. Yes.
Not on sleds that might slide on the slope?
Correct.
Any other questions about the slopes? Richard, any questions from you?
No.
Paul?
So you're drilling... Are you doing like a helical pile or are you just taking out the soil?
I believe the post will be driven directly. Is that correct, Mike?
Just identify yourself again, Mike.
Yeah, so Mike Z., Blue Wave, project director. We will be completing a geotechnical analysis that's yet to be completed. It's scheduled for January. Exact date to be determined, but from that, we'll be able to see what kind of posts will be best for installation here. It'll either be a pile-driven post or screwed-in post, depending on that technical analysis that gets completed. So it's one or the other.
It's not going to be like a core pier into the soil, is it? Meaning that you're going to drill out, you're going to have a barrel opening that you're going to pour concrete and then...
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So you're not going to have soil that's going to be taken out and subject to flowing down the hills, right?
Correct. Well, no.
Thank you. The next point...
I apologize, I did not identify myself for the record. I'm Steve Herzog with VHB. We're the engineer and environmental consultant, working on behalf of Blue Wave. The second item, we'll see which one comes up here, was the Stormwater Management System Operations and Maintenance Manual. And actually, this was included in our package for the site plan approval, but it wasn't finalized and hadn't been signed, and so it wasn't part of what we thought met the requirements of the stormwater management permit application. But based on the discussion of the previous meeting, I think this is what the board had in mind. So this is the plan that describes how stormwater management features will be maintained.
I believe everybody received this, correct?
Yes.
Any questions on that? Me and you more.
Typos, I presume you intended to have a telephone for both the fire chief, first listed, and the police chief, second listed, but they both came up police.
Oh, okay. Yes, one was to be fire.
I think that was under the spill report, but I'm not entirely sure. Clean it up and it'll be good. Spelling.
Do you have any questions on that?
Looked like one of my documents.
It should be filled out, that's what he's saying, I'm sorry. So 1A should be filled out? That's what Stephen was saying?
1A?
Section 1A filled out, is that what you're saying? With the contacts?
If you could dial it up, I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
So this is what needs to be populated?
Further notification. Yep, go down. Emergency, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, you have fire department listed, 2 and 3, and it's just supposed to be police the second time.
They had two fire departments listed. Stephen, just... Not police.
Yeah, it may in fact be the right telephone number even. I didn't do the full edit check, but I just flagged a couple of things.
Easy enough.
Any other questions on this report? Or edits?
One question on D1, more about policy, is on Operation Maintenance Plan Summary, sheet D1, on reporting and documentation. It stipulates that they'll have to, you know, obviously maintain this log, but it will be subject to, available for inspection by the Conservation Commission. Is that the only review of this stormwater maintenance operation plan? Is that the town's process to... I welcome in VHB for the completeness of their report. It was extremely well done. That was a more of a question for the board, is what is our reporting, their reporting responsibility for maintenance of this log? Is that what you turned in? Only available for...
According to the town bylaw, the planning board is the stormwater management authority, but the highway department is also involved, or should be involved in that. They were involved in writing the bylaw, and they get copies and everything, so I don't know what your pleasure is on that. You want to include the highway department on that as well?
I think it's available for review. I don't know if the public community has them. It's mandatory that it's be submitted once you're... It's just available for review.
Yeah.
That's maybe a discussion for another time.
Be the planning board, not the Conservation Commission?
It's definitely planning board. Richard, what's your take on that?
It should be the... It's meant to be the planning board and the highway department. If you didn't work within buffer zone, then Conservation Commission as well. You're not doing anywhere near wetlands, so...
No. No wetlands or buffer zone.
And the only reason highway was brought up in this, even in the discussions of drafting some of the general bylaws in recent years, is that they have staff, you know, we're volunteers. So they have the staff and the, probably the organization where they can keep track of these things, where a volunteer board, it's pretty difficult unless things change in town. So that's the way it is right now.
It's fairly common to have the DPW or highway department be the day-to-day person, because they typically handle the MS4 permitting requirements for large communities, so they need to have those.
I don't disagree with you, but in the way the last general bylaws were written up, they put all the authority on the planning board.
The authority goes to the planning board typically...
Enforcement?
Enforcement typically is done through the DPW or the building commissioner. Oftentimes DPW, because they have the stormwater system in the town.
All right. Have we got any other items on this report that need to be addressed?
Not a lot.
Paul? Good. Excellent. All right, so we'll go to the third component of this, the low-water crossing, and you can pick up on that.
Sure. That crossing detail the board had asked for illustrates the locations... There are three locations in the access road where floodwaters in the 100-year storm will be allowed to cross over the road if it does not pass through the culvert. And so essentially, the road is composed of larger stones with aprons to manage the erosive forces of the stormwater.
Now, I think you brought that up originally. Are you good with that, or you need some more clarification on it?
I'm comfortable with the details.
Dan?
I'm good.
Stephen?
Like Chris.
Paul?
Okay, I'm okay.
You're good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So... Does anyone else from the applicant want to speak on any issue? This young lady here came from Portland, Maine. Is there anything you'd have to add? I hate not to ask you after traveling so far if you have anything to add or to the application that might have been in question, or...
No.
You're just here as a safety pal?
[laughing]
Anyone else from the Wave people? There's, I don't think there's any butters here tonight from the public, except the owner of the property, which Tom is here. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I actually like that you flagged the CONCON, even though that's not specifically appropriate in this town. You know, stormwater ends up in our wetlands and waterways, and they're too often left out of the equation. So in this case, the particulars are planning board and highway department to discuss.
All right, that being said, and all the information we have necessary has been discussed and logged in.
And as boards were, I've drafted decisions, assuming the board is going to take a firm to vote on, that you might, if you want, you can discuss the conditions in them during the public hearing, in case you want any feedback from the applicant on those. And based on discussion, I think one condition we added, the stormwater to complete and revise the O&M document and submit that. And you'll note that I've did in three different decisions. I was going to do one for site plan review and special permit combined, and then one for stormwater. And through email discussion with Tom Reedy, I was persuaded that Reedy should do separate special permit, site plan review, and stormwater. There's different appeal authorities on it, and also from a permitting perspective, without the special permit, there's no reason to have a site plan review, because the use wouldn't be allowed. So move that step without the site plan review approval, there's no reason to do the stormwater, because you won't have a site plan to evaluate. So then that takes you to the third decision of a stormwater. And attached, each of them is a checklist I developed for review criteria, and you'll note that on the stormwater bylaw, there is not a specific set of standards for review. There is in state regulations, and they've done that, but there are nine objectives under stormwater that I think were really kind of intended to be the review standards for stormwater permitting, for the, in addition to the state standards. And so I use those in terms of trying to develop criteria for approval permit. And I don't know if you have any questions?
Maybe a point of order on the site plan approval. There are four waivers, which...
Yes.
Are they specifically required by us to approve each individual waiver, or just as a point of...
Yes, you have to approve each waiver, and that's, and the motion to approve would need to be to approve the waivers and grant approval of the site plan review, subject to the conditions and findings, because the bylaw requires you to make finding for the reason for each of the waivers.
All right, so do you want to go through this, or you want to just... Because everybody had it, do you want to go through it all?
Yeah, if you want to, you can go through the...
I have the special permit up right now.
Okay. I'll do it fairly quickly. Back on reading the conditions, basically you've got conformed to the plans, and then that has provisions for making changes, and if they're de minimis changes, how those get processed, and then non-de minimis changes, how those be processed. Buried utilities and where there will be above-ground utilities, because where the developers put them on the ground, they will be underground, but where their recipient utility is doing the work, they will be above ground, as I discussed in the last public hearing. The battery energy storage system, I put a condition in here that it's sized and utilized solely for this installation, because increasingly, there is a demand for battery energy storage systems that are exclusive of a solar operating system, so they pull from other sources. But since this one is sized strictly for this project, stated as such.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Can you clarify what that means? I understand what a battery does. I understand what size means, and I understand what to solely serve this installation. However, if you think about it from a context of potential energy, you can make a battery as big as a building, a three-story building that could store enough energy for days for several megawatts, so that's kind of a...
The site plan shows a particular location where you're going to drive the size limitation on it.
I understand that, but it's not a big point, but just from a context of the statement here.
We could say be sized and...
As shown on the plans, just...
As shown on the plans, serve a 1.99 megawatt facility.
Okay.
So you want to define better, Paul?
Well... I think the intent of how it was written, excuse me, was there are two types of storage systems. One is standalone, where it's charged by the grid. The other is coupled with the solar. The coupled with the solar does have limitations. You would never make a three-story building version of it, because the solar system won't need that much energy. It can only charge from the solar, and this is empty, and it's turned from the solar. So there is a very different world where this is...
Got you.
...at least it meant something. The other thing could take acres of just batteries.
Your name again, sir?
Aaron Sings.
From the Wave?
Yes.
There's one here, and there's one here.
And there's been a state judicial court decision where they've indicated that if you have a solar system, that a battery energy storage system for that system is to be considered accessory. But if it's a standalone system or something serving more than that rate, then that would not be an accessory, there would be a principal use by itself, is the implication of the decision. So therefore, making clear that this is an accessory to this one, and is not to be larger than necessary. So I put, as shown, the plans to serve the 1.99 megawatt facility.
That makes sense. Kind of splitting here, but yes.
Lease area of installation is anticipated to not exceed 25.4, but there may be some changes in that size configuration, and I think that's fine as long as it doesn't change the plans and layout of the project that the planning board approved. Stormwater system maintenance, that's got to be done according to the stormwater permit. Solar energy and battery energy storage facility system maintenance, again, they've got a maintenance plan for that as well. Decommission financial surety. The bylaw requires them to provide a surety. So what I put in here, the initial amount would be $78,007.12, which is 125% of the applicants engineer's estimate. Your bylaw says it cannot be more than 25% of the estimate, so I would use the maximum amount the bylaw allows. The form of the surety, Mr. Reedy and I went through this, it being informed satisfactorily to Town Southampton, I prefer surety from a Massachusetts entity, so you don't have to file elsewhere, but there may not be, it's hard to find a surety that's based in Massachusetts, licensed here. And the issue from my perspective is provide that if you do have to file a claim on it, you don't have to go to Minnesota and deal with the courts in Minnesota. You file, and all the proceedings are in Massachusetts. And I say that because I dealt with the subdivision that had a surety out of Minnesota, and was on cost his arm and leg trying to claim that, so the town council worked with them, relied, and said, we'll negotiate something. And then it's incorporating all the application materials, plan materials, PowerPoint slides, the addition, the materials they submitted tonight, and the expiration lapse within one year if they don't make substantial use. And then I review the special permit criteria relative to this, and in my estimation, they compliant with all the items to the extent they apply. I don't think number six applies, because you look at section 11 of the zoning bylaw, there's nothing in there that applies to this. Then with the special permit.
All right, so before we go any further, do you want to cover all these three phases of conditions before we close the public hearing?
Yes. That way, if there's any discussion, they can comment, because once closed, they can't say anything.
All right. Any other comments on what we just covered here for the special permit?
I have a question. It just caught me, I didn't notice it when we were looking at them, but is it a bylaw requirement that it has to be only for one year? Can it be for two years? Two years is standard for us.
The bylaw provides one year to make substantial use.
Pulling a building, right?
That usually means you've got something operational on it. That's one year from the date of the 20-day appeal period lapsed, and so it'd be, let's say they filed it, and on Friday, it'd be...
Mid-January, right?
Yeah, around January 15th.
Yeah, 10th, 15th, January.
We can ask for an extension year?
You can't ask for an extension for good cause.
It can only be a year, and we can do a year.
It's the way the bylaw's written right now, but that's got to be reviewed somewhere down the line.
State law allows up to three years, and...
We have concerns with the utility construction schedule, so it's a lot of it's out of our hands, so we'll come back and ask for an extension.
Yeah. That'd be a case of good cause if the, if your recipient utility is not prepared to let you go connect, then you can't make good use of it, so that's...
All right, so we'll go on to the...
Site plan review.
Site plan approval.
As noted earlier, they've asked for four waivers, as we discussed at the last hearing. Documentation by an acoustical engineer of the noise levels generated, protected generated, that the site plans show existing isolated trees 10-inch caliper or larger and shrubs, minimum setbacks, project site straddles, several parcels owned in common that are part of the actual project, by its nature, not meet the setback between the common property line, and land clearing, solar erosion, habitat impacts, as we talked about earlier. Installation should not occur on any slopes greater than 15% or minimize erosion. And I'm indicated with attachment that make all the, they've, I've satisfied the findings required for site plan review, and I listed the reasons supporting the granting of the waivers, and those were discussed essentially at the last hearing. And conditions approved, again, conformed to plans, buried utilities, above-ground utilities. I will revise the battery storage, as we talked about in the special permit, lease area of installation... Lease area of installations, the same as on special permit, same stormwater. All these conditions are the same as what was on the special permit draft, along with the incorporated materials. And it said in my estimation, they've satisfied all the criteria unless they request a waiver. And so with the waiver, they would meet the criteria. To the extent they apply. And any questions, comments on that? Stormwater permit. I have attached the review of the objectives of the stormwater permit bylaw and my, as those are standards and my estimation, they satisfy those. Additionally, they've demonstrated that the Plan 40 complies with the DEP's stormwater management standards. And it should say stormwater approval. Again, conform to plans as noted, as discussed earlier. And we'll add in there that they need to update and correct the, complete and correct the stormwater O and M plan.
You on page three?
Yes. And that would need to be submitted for applying for, before you start in the site work. Let's actually be real quick. Again, same materials incorporated as the other decisions. There is no expiration date on a stormwater permit, but since this is connected to a project as special permit and site plan view, if the special permit lapses, then it's reasonable that stormwater permit relapse. And that's it. Questions, comments?
Thank you. It incorporates the long conversation we had last time, issues that were raised. And you've taken the detailed comparison against the requirements of the bylaw. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. And there's no questions, then you can close the hearing.
That being said, thank you, Richard. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Stephen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now at this point, we will take up each one of the items for approval. Starting with the special permit. I have a motion.
I move that we approve the special permit as submitted.
With the waivers that have been requested.
I can make a... I can make a suggestion.
Go ahead.
The motion could be to grant the special permit, making the findings as identified in attachment A to the draft decision and subject to all findings and conditions stated in the draft decision as revised during the public hearing.
Yes.
So moved. All right, so Mark has made that with those provisions. Do I have a second?
Stephen.
Stephen. Motion again made by Mark, seconded by Stephen. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we will go on to the site plan approval. And a motion.
I move that we grant site plan approval for the agro-solar installation with reference to the memo prepared by Richard Harris documenting the findings. Waivers.
And granting the waivers as requested and the reasons that are laid out in the draft decision and subject to the conditions as revised in the public hearing.
So your entire decision is incorporated. That's my motion.
As revised during the public hearing.
Indeed, thank you.
Motion made by Stephen and seconded by Richard.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? Seconded by who?
Second.
Come on, Dan, what's going on? Dan's taking all the notes. So who seconded that? Mark again?
They can talk in the session. I thought Dan seconded.
Did Dan? A motion made by Stephen and seconded by Dan. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
He's got to survive. I'm not going to survive.
Thank you, Paul. And lastly, the stormwater management permit with conditions and again, all the jargon that Richard had given us before with the...
As revised during the public hearing.
As revised.
I find that the simplest language.
Do we have a motion on that?
I move that we approve the stormwater management permit for the solar agricultural array with all the according items just listed in the draft document as prepared by Richard and as presented by the applicant.
As revised during the hearing.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Steve. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think that is it.
I'll make these changes, get them over to Paul tomorrow, so Paul Diamond.
And then once those are, I sign those and file with the quirk, you get a 20-day appeal period?
Yes, apparently in your site plan approval, you've got a 20-day appeal period, which is not normal, but...
It shouldn't be, should it?
No. No.
That's what I mean. The bylaw is drafted years ago. We run, just to confirm, just to try to vindicate ourselves somewhat. We had no solar bylaw, but solar was coming on the scene, so we hurriedly had some input from other towns and we put it together as best we could, but that's why it's there, because it was haphazardly done and we hope to pick up on that this next year and get it cleaned up in modern day terms. So all this red tape probably wouldn't have to come before the applicant. So, but it is what it is right now. But that's small town for you. I'm sorry. So, given that, we'll wish you well. Congratulations. And good luck, Tom. I'm very happy for you and your family and your operation there going forward. That will help sustain you even more going into the future and beyond. And thank you all.
Safe trip.
Happy holidays, safe travels back to Maine.
Same project, thank you.
Back home to Boston or wherever you hail from.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
I'm working with several communities that their bylaws have special permits of two-year lapse in periods. And I mentioned to them that state law allows up to three years. Nope. We don't want to change to three years. We want to keep it two years. And then got one community that I was working with. They have in their ordinance, the city, that special firms lapse and they can only be extended for no more than six months.
Sounds rigid, man.
Yeah.
You want to make it easy.
Well, moving right along here. I'll just have Richard stand from, we don't have much after that, but I mean, I want, I didn't bring it up at the last meeting, but we did submit a DLTA request that Richard wrote and...
Guys, mind taking our conversation out there?
Yeah, we've just got to clean up a few things here. Thanks. Just give a brief synopsis of what you applied for for DLTA with PVPC coming up for the coming year.
Essentially, it's to have them update the water supply protection district in coordination with the other communities that are under the Barnes-Aquifer. And as part of that, they would do an assessment of whether or not the Barnes-Aquifer advisory committee could be reactivated. Basis is taking reading with the communities if they want to be party to it. So I wrote it up in a way that the number one objective is a new water supply protection district bylaw for Southampton. And the community engagement would include community engagement within the community, but also within the region as well.
I like it.
Yep. Dan, any comments?
Exactly what we wanted, yeah.
Did that include delineation, redelineation of anything?
It won't be redelineation. It'll just be using updated database from Mass DEP. Which I'm working on in another community that they were redoing their water supply protection district. And what we noted is they have zone two extending into zone one. And I was talking to Larry Smith, but he said, that can't happen. By nature, it's supposed to be exclusive, but I've asked Mass DEP for explanation and they've this is central mass and they forwarded to Boston office. And the guy said, give me an example. And gave him an example. And he hasn't got back to me yet.
It precipitated Paul from the requests that we had for a possible zoning redistricting of that college highway where TruHertz car washes that they wanted to buy, Big Y, and put up gas tanks, which didn't go anywhere. But it precipitated the conversation about updating the water protection bylaw because there were no zones in our current bylaw. There's only zone one, two, or three. We're running the seat of our pants, so.
So, and what we're looking at the community is if in fact, and I've been told by an engineer who looked at the Mass DEP regulations and said, it is possible under their definition that zone two could be recharging within a zone one. And so what you would need to do is if you want to be sure that there is no overlap, you'd need to write into your bylaw that any parcel lying within zone one is not to be deemed, considered a part of zone two. And that where you carve it out. And on the map, you can do a display in zone one above it and it'll do that. But from a text perspective, you need to write it in there like that. Because this other community, they've got like six wells and five of them are totally underlaid by zone two and one. And one is partially underlaid by zone two within zone one.
Okay, but the zone one is just arbitrary radius from the well.
Yeah, depending on size of the well, yes.
And so that's the ultimate protection.
Right.
Supplier is supposed to have ultimate control.
Right.
Complete control over that radius. So that trumps anything else. That's the strongest protection. And yeah, hopefully we don't drag zone two regulations and review because they're distinct. You can only be in one zone.
Yeah, you should only be in one zone. You shouldn't be in two zones because that'd be extreme complication for any property owner. It already is complicated.
Yeah, physically and regularly.
Do you ever encounter any of that with water supply in your work?
No.
You're more traffic than anything, right? All right, moving right along. The other thing I mentioned briefly at our last meeting, I've got to submit this Friday to the town administrator. I'm just going to put in, this thing is old. You had no desire to have each personal laptops for planning boards, so I'm going to put in for a new
Laptop.
Laptop, Chromebook, or whatever the hell you call it, and a laser printer of some sort because I'm using my own and I print out enough stuff. But I'll put that in, see where it flies. But that's the only capital asset that I think we're in need of at this point. When it comes back up again, if I, like Mark suggested, if I needed a file cabinet or something else, but that's all I'm putting in for. I'm not going to nick the town up too bad for that. I put in asset costs and this was just a flyer. I just looked into some, an HP laptop and a printer and I didn't, I don't think it'll exceed $1,200. It'll probably be even less than that. So, but that's what I'm going to submit.
Intentionally low shouldn't be considered capital items, but yeah.
Oh no, consider the source, right? I have a warrant here from Richard. I submitted November last time. I I thought I processed this, but I'll double check, but I don't believe it was done, but I will double check. But this is for December's work.
And this was for November work, about submitted in December one.
Right, I'm sorry. Here's November work. Water supply protection research, scenic road, which we haven't heard back from ever source where they're going with that yet. And most of the solar, solar work, DLTA request. I'm asking you to approve 975, 13 hours at his $75 hour rate plus a little, there was no mileage involved in that. So 975 for Richard Harris.
Move approval of the warrant for 975 for Richard Harris.
Motion made by Stephen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sessioned by Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With that, my friends, oh, there's one, I have something on the horizon. Just got some emails that I've been going back and forth on. There's a ground mount solar residential. No agrivoltaiac. But that'll be coming up probably in January. They were inquiring about it. They were pretty unfamiliar with that they had to apply. By right in town is roof mounts, but anything ground mount has to be a hearing and a butter notification. So he's hoping to have that information in soon. So once it's filed, I'll get the public hearing scheduled. But that'll probably be mid-January, given the timeframe we're working on now. And I think that's about it. If anybody got any other committee reports or anything to add?
I have a question for you about a butter list. It's common for almost any applicant to have to notify a butters. How do they acquire in a butters list? What is your guidance?
They, they apply at the assessor's office?
And they're chasing their tail on how to efficiently provide that. And they're chasing their tail on how to efficiently provide that.
It's, you know, it was for this particular hearing we just finished with, you know...
There are a lot.
It's a form that came back. I don't know, I believe they charge a small fee, but they get the butters, and they also submit labels for the mailings that have to go out.
The assessor prepares these.
Yeah, right.
Oh, for God's sakes.
Because it has to be certified, a butters list, and only the assessors can certify.
Right.
Thank you. But if they had better technology, there's no limit on having to do it by hand and eyeball, right?
They should be able to do it off the website. We've got GIS system here.
It's a buffering analysis using GIS. And that's not what they're doing presently, unfortunately.
Yeah, because...
So again, this hooks back to some sort of land resources staff person with a workstation and saying, "Oh, sure, what's the address again?" And buffer and...
I haven't looked at the mapping program on Southampton's website, but most communities have one that...
Near map.
You put in there, and you identify the property, 300 foot, and then it's clear the ones that aren't technically butters under state law, and then they print out either check cell or labels. That's the most common.
No, it's gotten to the point where they're talking about contracting it out to an engineering firm, and we are gonna be sucking wind if we're doing that, so...
Who's that? Who's they?
The Board of Assessors, sir.
Is it because of staffing?
Yes, and, yeah.
Is that really necessary for them to...
I just heard it's required that the assessors certify.
Yeah, so how does a consultant certify what the...
They can't.
It would be reviewed by the board, but they'd pay somebody to do the buffer analysis.
But how is it certified by the board?
They'd submit it to the board, and the board would look at it and verify that. It really needs to be done with a mapping program in-house.
That's all I need.
Sent out to another, to a third party to do the analysis, and submit to you. It's not the way to do it. It needs to be in-house.
That is rework. You're right, Paul. I mean, that's what it is.
And part of the issue with that is it's unlikely that this third-party outside engineer is gonna have the updated assessor's database. And if it's not updated, you're not getting current butters. I've had a community that had the problem, because...
I'm sharing insight from the committee, to which I liaise for the select board. I'm sorry if it was too much for the agenda tonight.
No, I'm kind of... I'm not... I guess I'm not surprised, but I will say that I have not had any complaints right along from people that said, "Jeez, I'm having trouble getting in a butters list." You know, it seems that when someone filed, they had the application, they had things going. I hadn't heard that things were...
Well, that's great. That means our customer-facing base is good. The back office is in turmoil.
Yeah, the technology might not be there, but I haven't heard any delays from applicants.
Good.
Who maintains the maps?
Timebond.
Timebond does?
They have a... I think they host a server, so they'd be getting paid for that, I think. It's not our business.
When it came to... When it comes to updating, though, I thought PVPC does updating of maps, no?
No, Timebond hosts their... Hosts the... I used to believe they host their GIS mapping. They're the ones that have been involved with it over the years.
I know CAI does a lot around the state. I keep seeing their program popping up at different communities.
I keep on getting something constantly from some map place that's constantly hitting the email, promoting whatever they've got to sell, but that's not my...
The best approach is an entity that maintains... That's used to working with vision and maintaining assessors' maps. And there's not many that are used to doing both. And you have one that does... That's used to doing both. They know how to integrate vision cards into the mapping program, and that makes it simple.
Website, townofsouthampton.org reflects the membership of the board from three years ago. Could the chair look into that, please?
That wasn't updated?
I don't know. Nope, not as of today.
That allows you to maintain secrecy.
I don't need more minutes of info making it.
You sound like what I had two weeks ago. There's a virus going around.
Oh, it sucks.
I was really sick for a solid week.
All right, I'll look into that, Stephen. Other than that, any other committee reports or other pertinent information we need to hear before adjourn for the holidays?
Say germs.
Happy bolsters.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. All right, I'll second that.
All right, the longest night.
Yeah, not bad.
All in favor, aye.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Happy holidays, people.